Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to Lowell Planning Board for Thursday, September 4th, 2025. The first matter on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes for August 18th, 2025. Any of the board members have any comments as to the minute or any requests?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the August 18th minutes as submitted.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. We have continued business. We have a definitive subdivision, 318 Andover Street. Greg Looney has applied to Lowell Planning Board to subdivide the existing lot at the above address. The subject property is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district. The newly created lot will not meet the minimum furniture requirement pursuant to Section 5.1 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. The project requires definitive subdivision approval from the planning board under Lowell's subdivision of land regulations. The applicant has notified us in writing that they're requesting to have this matter withdrawn. So I'll make a motion that we allow the applicant to withdraw with prejudice.
With prejudice, Mr. Chairman?
No, without. I'm sorry. I went to say without. I wrote it down the wrong way. Without. Without prejudice.
Okay. I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
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 And the opposition, none. So that motion is allowed. Next matter we have is 246 University Ave. And that's a request to withdraw it as well. The site plan review and special permit at 246 University Ave. Masha Hebert has applied to Lowell Planning Board for site plan review and special permit approval to convert a three-unit residential and one-unit commercial building into a four-unit residential building. The property is located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district. It requires site plan review approval under Section 11.4.2.2 for an expansion of a residential structure with more than three dwelling units and a special permit under Section 12.1C for four dwelling units on one lot. As indicated, the applicant has also requested in writing to have this request withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the request to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. And motion carries. Application's withdrawn. Moving along, we have a tree hearing that's being requested to continue for the third time. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 87.5 and Chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinance, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons about the proposal. Be moving of one tree at 2 Van Greenbee Road with a diameter of approximately 34 inches, one tree at 24 Van Greenbee Road with a diameter of approximately 28 inches, one tree at 29 Van Greenbee Road with a diameter of approximately 40 inches, two trees at 61 Van Greenbee Road with approximate diameter of 31 inches and 29 inches, and one tree at 70 Grand B Road with a diameter approximately 30 inches, and two trees at 75 Grand B Road with approximate diameter of 28 inches and 23 inches. The removal of these trees is necessary to maintain the integrity of the public sidewalk and utilities. As indicated, the applicant has submitted a request for continuance.
Mr. Chairman, I know we discussing some dates. I think from the history we've had so far with this application, I think we can expect a robust turnout for this hearing. And I would suggest that, my understanding is we have three items on for the October 6th meeting, and we have two items on for October 20th. So based on the agenda, I would recommend continuing the meeting to the October 20th meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion being continued until October 20th? Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Lucia. All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. The motion carries. So this matter is continued to the October 20th date. Okay. Moving along further, we have a special permit for 353 Wilder Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Conomo Holdings LLC to convert the existing two-family home at the above address to a three-family home. The subject property is located in traditional multi-family zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval from the Lowell Board, Planning Board, per Article 12.1 for the use. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Attorney Katherine Flood, Flood Law Office, 549 Rogers Street. Here on behalf of Conomo Holdings LLC. Here with me tonight is the manager, Brendan Conley, as well as Paul Campbell from Chess Engineering. We are here for a special permit pursuant to Section 12.1 for use to convert an existing two-family building located at 353 Wilder Street into a three-family. The subject property is located in a traditional multi-family zoning district. The property consists of approximately 11,604 square feet of land with approximately 4,948 square feet of living space. The current layout of the building is one unit per floor. The building will consist of three units. The first floor, first unit will be on the first floor, the second unit will be on the second floor, and the third unit will be on the back of the property and will consist of space on the first and second floors. There will be no expansion to the exterior of the structure except the size of the windows and a change in the siding material. The neighborhood surrounding this property consists of a mix of uses, single-family, two-family, multifamilies, as well as a nursing home across the street. The renovation aligns with the intent of the City of Lowell master plan, which objectives are as follows: making more housing more affordable by adding more housing, adding to the housing stock, and adding more housing since the rate of housing is not meeting the demands of the city, and the increasing tax revenue. As you can see from the plan submitted, the exterior of the building will not be modified. The structure as it sits on the land allows for the use as a three-family. The proposed development does not pose any negative impacts on the environment. The renovation is strictly on the interior and the siding on the exterior. As you can see from the plan, we have sufficient parking. There is parking for eight vehicles. The access to the lot is off Princeton Boulevard. Per recommendations that were provided in the comments when we filed by the city traffic engineer, the turnaround in the parking area was revised from 16 to 17 to allow for more green space. The plan that was submitted shows the renovation. That was also a condition when we appeared before the zoning board. There are no impact to the public services or utilities anticipated for this project. The project is connected to city water and sewer. The renovation of this property will improve the neighborhood. It will be consistent with the characteristics of the neighborhood and be beneficial to the city. We appeared before the zoning board and we obtained the variance as set forth in the application. I'm happy to address all the comments after I let Paul show you and discuss the plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Katherine. Paul Campbell, Chess Engineering, 126 John Street, Lowell. I'll keep it brief on the site plan since we were in front of a zoning board back in July. So as we said, this is an existing building. The footprint's not going to change. The changes are all interior, going from a two-family to a three-family home. We are going to be paving some of the area to make some off-street parking. All the changes to the parking lot that we had presented to the ZBA and recommended by the traffic engineer have been incorporated in this site plan. So it's precisely what the traffic engineer had requested. Utility-wise, the house is already served by city water and sewer, so we're just going to be reusing that exact service. And then today, the stormwater permit was approved by the Lowell wastewater utility. So it's a fairly straightforward plan. We're just going to be collecting rainwater in the parking lot, directing it to a catch basin at the driveway, and then directing it underground. So there really isn't much, it's a pretty straightforward site plan. Everything that was approved by variances, everything else meets zoning requirements for setback, open space, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a, we feel it's a pretty benign project, and it's an improvement on what is there today. So happy to answer any more detailed questions about the project, but I keep it pretty brief. Yeah, thanks.
While you're there, could you go over the parking? Because I know you did your original seminal.
Sure.
Parking, and then transportation had some questions and a suggestion, and then you changed it to meet their criteria. If you could just go over that, please, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, no problem. So we have four parking spaces over here, and then we have four parking spaces over here. The traffic engineer recommended a turnaround added over here to allow this car space to back out and come in, come out. And then they recommended this drive aisle width of 17 feet so that a car, again, can pull out and then, and come out here, and to maintain as much green space as possible on the property. So it was pretty easy changes to incorporate. There's no problem.
I think that's a big improvement.
Yeah, much, much, yeah. It was a good suggestion. But we still meet setbacks for, you know, from the front property line.
I know before she had a comment like, you know, try to show us how you're going to get in and out.
Yeah.
Medium-sized car.
Right.
This thing should do it a lot better, yeah.
Yeah, so there's definitely more parking on off-street parking now than what's there today, even though it's a two-family, but they just had a small driveway, so. But yeah, happy to answer any other questions, but I want to keep it brief.
Can you, I mean, so three, two families and two, three families. How many each, each of the units, bedroom, how many?
So how many bathrooms?
Bedroom.
Bedrooms?
Yeah.
10 total bedrooms are in the part of the project.
Okay, so each unit, how many?
I think Brendan can answer that easier.
Hi. So the two existing units, one of them has four bedrooms, another has two. The additional unit that will be added will have four bedrooms. So a total of 10.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? Anybody else? Okay, at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody else on behalf of the applicant? Attorney Flood? No. Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant before I turn it over to the public? Okay. At this point in time, we'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. In opposition? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. At this time, I'll turn it over to the board members. Anybody have any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Vashet.
So there's, there's a big alteration being done to the building, but it was already done, and it was a huge improvement because I'm very familiar with the building, and I honestly thought the garage was going to fall into the Princeton Boulevard. I actually have never seen anything like it because the trim was separated and it was tilting out. I go by it an awful lot. My daughter lives in a three-family just around the corner from there. So I'm very familiar with the area, very familiar with the housing stock, and very familiar with this particular property, which it was one of those properties that looks like it had so much potential, but looked like it was being, you know, neglected, to be honest with you. Yeah, exactly. So, and when I was out on the site, there was a neighbor across the street yelling at me saying, you know, whatever they do is going to be an improvement from what's there. So, you know, so obviously, I like to see the fact that it finally, I'm glad that garage came down that needed to be removed. There was no way you were going to save that. Would have loved to see more of the green space stay in the, in the front. It's quite a, it's quite a property, to be honest with you. But you're still going to have a fairly good-size, I think, area for even children to, to play a little bit, younger children to play in there. It is fenced in. That lodge tree is staying, right? That's on Wilder Street, I believe, is staying on the property. You know, the, I think the suggestions from the traffic engineer and the alterations that you made are appropriate. I always have issues with the maintenance program for, for these infiltration systems as far as making sure they're adhered to. I didn't, you know, look at the operating maintenance plan. It's pretty generic, but.
Yeah, it's a vacuum truck, basically, twice a year.
Yeah, exactly. And I do know in some rental units where I, I know the contractor, he's passed away since, but regardless of what this is, they try putting sand and, you know, it's not a good thing. And matter of fact, in this part of the country, it starts to, you start to have all kinds of problems with it. So it is what it is. We got a lot of these all over the city, but that, you know, obviously, the maintenance program has to be followed. That's critical. And however that gets passed on to make sure that nobody's using any sand, you know, on the, on the lot. But is it, it's not going to be owner-occupied? Is it completely investment? Is, okay, all right. All right, I really don't have any comments, Mr. Chairman. I think, you know, clearly, parking is, is tight around there. There's parking across the street on Princeton Boulevard, but you're really, there's no parking on the, on the side of this particular property. So really, the fact that you're able to accommodate the parking on site is, is huge. So again, it's all my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vashet. Caleb, any question, comments?
No, I think the reconfiguration, the revision to the parking and satisfying the transportation planner comment are a great improvement. And particularly was concerned about any driveway opening to, to Wilder Street, which is very busy road. So this layout is, I have no problem with this layout. So I'm supportive of this project. Thank you.
Lucia, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree. I think that the changes being made are going to be beneficial to the neighborhood. I think it stays in character with the neighborhood. Jerry had mentioned the mature tree that's right in front. There are several mature trees on that property. Do you intend to keep them all, or do you anticipate taking any down?
Yeah, I don't believe any trees are slated to come down. Double-checked the site plan, but. Yeah, we're talking about that 14-inch tree here at the intersection. That should still.
I thought I counted seven. Okay.
Yeah, we're, yeah, the trees are, are in place. We're not, we're not removing any trees.
Great. And as far as the other comments with regard to the fire department comments with sprinklers, reconfiguring, all of that, I assume there's a plan in place for that?
We discussed that when we were at the zoning board, and my client has agreed to sprinkler the property based on the comments set forth.
Great. I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Paul, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Jovason, any question?
I'm satisfied. They're doing a very good job in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, my only comment was to begin with was the, obviously, the parking, which I liked that up when I first looked at it. I said I'd like to see a little additional parking. And I'm glad when you hit on transportation comments, you took them seriously, adjusted them, and I think it makes it a much better project. And obviously, the fire department, you know, they want you to hardwire the detectives, which is by code, and if you don't, you don't get a building permit, right? Mr. Folgo, I'm going to say, you don't have them? I can't give you a rock and a paper, I should say. So besides that, yeah, I'm in favor of the special permit.
So we just need one vote on a special permit. Let's request it of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve the special permit. They've committed to not taking down the mature trees as part of this plan, so I really want to make that a condition of the site plan or the special permit approval, that the mature trees will, will stay on-site. We talk about, again, heat island effect. This is in a densely populated neighborhood, so to have a lot that has mature trees on it is valuable. It's valuable to the aesthetics of the neighborhood and actually serves a purpose. So that would be the only condition I would be.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Hearing none. The motion carries. Good luck. You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, moving along in the agenda, we have a site plan and special permit, 110 Branch Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to the application by Sohfon Singh seeking to convert an existing ground-floor commercial unit into two residential units. The property is located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district and requires site plan review approval under Section 11.4.2.2 to convert a development with more than three dwelling units and a special permit under Section 12.1F for a structure with 11 or more dwelling units on the lot. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Nice battle. Thank you.
I'll start over. So this is an existing building at the corner of School Street and Branch Street. It's in the traditional mixed-use zone. Right now, it's an 11-unit building. 10 of those units are residential and one is commercial. And the commercial unit is the unit that we're talking about on the ground floor. What Ms. Singh wants to do is convert that commercial unit into two residential units. So the end result would be a 12-unit residential building. We are here for a special permit because that is a special permit use in this zone as well as a site plan due to the number of units in the building. We are not proposing any exterior work outside the building. This is all interior renovation. We did go to the zoning board, I believe, last month for some dimensional relief, which we received. That relief was for lot area per dwelling unit, open space per dwelling unit, and the quantity of parking spaces. So we did receive those variances. This use, the residential building, really fits into the character of the neighborhood. There's multifamily residential all around. I don't think it's going to have a, really any impact to the character of the neighborhood because it is an existing building and we're not changing the exterior at all. We're going to reuse the utilities that are there, and that was actually a comment from Lowell Wastewater. They wanted more information on the utilities, which we have added to the plan. So we're going to keep the same utilities. The building is already sprinkled, so they'll have to rework it a little bit, but the sprinkler system is already there in the building. As far as parking goes, there's eight deeded parking spaces right across the street, and that's all recorded at the registry of deeds. One of those spaces is reserved for this existing commercial unit, so that will continue to have that one space when it's turned into the residential. That's really the gist of the project. I can kind of get into more detail if you have any questions and happy to talk about it.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant before I open up to the public? Anybody else? Okay, hearing none? Okay. At this point in time, although, anybody here this evening, I'm going to open up to public? Anybody want to speak in favor of this project this evening? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this time, I'll turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Vashet. Want to go for it?
Yeah, it's, so it's, no, no exterior alterations being done. Quite frankly, when I pulled up to it, I'm surprised it wasn't already a residential unit.
It's been vacant. The commercial has been vacant for a while.
I suspect, yeah. And so it's interesting because there, I would not have, just driving by, would not have thought that that was a condominium ownership, right? So one of the things I do like about it is when I look at those units, and I know they could be all owned by one person, one trust, or they could be owned by several, but at the end of the day, it is an opportunity for homeownership at some point at, at the lower cost, you know, lower, lower end, to get into a unit and build some equity. So that was, I was, I was kind of happy to see that it was a condo unit. I'm surprised.
It's, yeah.
And more surprised that there was some deeded parking spaces across the street in sitting here this evening, which I didn't see in the paperwork, even more surprised that one of the deeded units is for this unit, one of the deeded spaces. So I would, I would make that as a condition that that stay with this unit because if we approved it, at least we know we had one spot that went along with it.
Sure.
The existing, you know, the, the housing that was developed in those neighborhoods, that was, you know, before people had automobiles, and that was, that's just been existing since the early 1900s.
Yeah, this is early 1900s.
Yeah, so there it sits. So I just think it's, it's already sprinkled, so you've just got to configure that to sprinkle those unit, that, that unit. And there's fire access on both, you know, on, on. And there's fire access on both, you know, on two, two sides of the building. It's at a corner lot. I mean, parking is tight, there's no question about it, but it's unique that it does have some deeded parking spaces that go along with it. So once again, I really, you know, trying to use it as commercial, it, we're not creating another unit that doesn't exist. There is a unit there. There could be some use. I think commercial use might even be worse than having a residential unit in there. So again, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any issues with the proposal. Understanding it certainly is dense, but I like the fact that there is at least one deeded parking spot with this unit.
Thank you. Caleb?
I don't have particularly concern, except when I, when I went upon the property, I see the stop-work notice on the door. Could you give us a little context about that?
Yeah, I think that happened before Ms. Sang purchased the building. The very red piece of paper. Okay. Yeah, okay. So I think Ms. Sang wasn't aware of the permitting that she needed. She started to do the work and then they asked her to stop, which she has, and now we're here, you know, trying to get the proper permits, so.
So are you in communication with the building department just to, this will work out and, and, and just want, because we didn't hear from the building department, I just wanted to make sure, understand.
Yeah, I didn't see any comments from them in the.
But you're, you're in touch with them in a way?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's pretty much concerning the conversion here that you're presenting to us?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think I agree with Member Fischek's comment that it's good to have parking to come with your unit, and I don't see any problem with converting that unit into residential, so I'm generally supportive of that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia, any question? Comment?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. I agree with the other members. The space has been vacant for some time as a retail space, so the ability to add housing and space that's not being used benefits our residents and the city. And then Clemente Park is very close by, and once those renovations are done, I think it will be an attractive place to live.
Thank you. Paul, any question?
I'm, I'm agree with.
Okay. Joverson, any question?
No, I'm happy. They doing a good place out of there. It used to be the appliance store. It's been gone for a while. It's been vacated for a little long, right?
It has.
Yeah, so when I went up there, I noticed the same thing. The locked door with the red sign, which was dated June 5th, saying no permit, and then a couple doors down, there was another lock on another door. So I'm like, what's going on here? So then I didn't know if it was in total ownership together until reading later, I found out it was a condominium association. So first I thought it was one special ownership without the parking, without the open space, and without everything else, and the size of the units, you know, how small they are. You need 2,500 square feet, and you have, the ones now have five something, now you have the four something. I'm like, wow. And it doesn't matter to me what the ZBA does. We stand independent of our own. So in a special permit, we can, whether you got those variances, it has no bearing on what we do. But obviously, if it's, now there's condominiums, I understand it's better than just one ownership for the first, one ownership for everything, and with all those waiver requirements that you requested, and the, the size of it, and I'm not having the parking for, technically, for 10 units, you go, you need two per unit. There'd be 20 for 12, you'd need 24 parking spots. So I'm like, whoa. It's a busy intersection, there's no doubt about that. I tried to park on Branch Street when I went up there, I couldn't. I had to loop around a couple times and park on School Street, and I'd drink heavy coffee getting in and out of my car because the building is right up to the sidewalk. Like I say, there's no open space anywhere.
Yeah, there's, there's no space to put parking on the site, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's tight, so.
That's what happens when you build a, for a zoning exist.
So the, the unit here, so the one with the, I was trying to read all the numbers. So the one that has the lock on it, that's the, that's the, one of the units we're talking about?
Yes. So it's the ground-floor unit, the door's at the corner of the, the intersection between the two streets.
Okay. So it'd be in the corner, then that unit there, then a couple doors down, there was another unit that had a lock on it, no sign. Is that your applicant?
I think that's a second entrance into that unit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it didn't have the sign, but it had it on the other one, okay.
Yeah.
And then in fact, I saw that, you know, the sign was dated June 5th, that that was three months ago. I'm like, nothing's happened since then. So obviously, it's the building inspector went up and put that notice there. So obviously, if we approve this, I'd like that, you know, make sure that you cooperate with anything that's requested by the building inspector. If he's put a stop order on it, obviously, you want to comply with any conditions that the building inspector would like. If not, you're not going to get the, the permit anyways, but since they've already put a stop order on it, I think going forward, any request by the building inspector would be reasonable.
Sure.
Okay. That's all the comments I have. Thank you. So we need a, two motions, correct, for the, if I read it correctly? The site plan and special permit? Yes. We need, yeah. The site plan approval, right. For more than three, then we need the special permit for more than 11.
Let's request it of the board for the site plan. We'll start with that one first.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the site plan with the following condition, that one of the deeded parking spaces remain designated for this unit.
Second. Motion made. We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes, yes. Any opposition? Hearing none? The motion carries, so the site plan is allowed. I'll make a motion for the special permit with the same condition as indicated for the site plan, with that one parking spot to be allowed, and also condition with, to comply by any, any request or conditions by the building inspector.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none? The special permit is allowed as well.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, we wish you well.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, do we have any further comments? Many board members? Hearing none? No comments further? Okay. That completes our agenda. Request a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Caleb, second by Lucia, all in favor by, say aye.
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 Board votes, yes, we are, motion carries. We have adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone.